Please give your attention to the short video.
This meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar to allow for public participation and comments. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority does not condone hate speech in any form. We continually strive to make life better for all members of our community and create an atmosphere where everyone feels a sense of safety and belonging. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak does so with civility, respect, and kindness for others. Citizens will have three minutes to speak. It is requested that public speakers state their names and organizations, but providing such information is voluntary. Citizens participating in person wishing to speak should submit a public speaker card to the clerk. Citizens participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial * 9 if participating via phone, and the chair or staff will call upon them at the appropriate time. Written public comments received in accordance with the teleconferencing special notice on the meeting agenda will be provided to the members. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they should raise their hand in Zoom or submit a public speaker card, and the chair will call upon them at the appropriate time. All written correspondence received after that and during the meeting will be entered into the record. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority.
Thank you. Deanna, would you like to conduct roll call?
Yes. Member Birdwell? Member Cooney? Member Dowjelly? Member Green Roselle? Member Ibarra?
Present.
Member Nestor Brush? Member Perry?
Present.
Member Sanders? Member Sanderson?
Here.
Member Thompson?
Here.
Member Toth?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith? Chair Clark?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum with members Cooney, Dowjelly, Green Roselle, Nestor Brush, and Vice Chair Smith absent.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Deanna, have we received any written public comments?
We have not received any written public comment.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public comment on an item that is not part of the agenda? If so, please raise your hand or your virtual hand. Do we have anybody in person or remote public comments?
We have no written in-person or remote public comment.
All right, that concludes our public comment item. The next item on the agenda is our consent calendar, which includes the summary of actions from April 24, 2025. Are there any changes or comments from the committee? Okay, if anybody from the public would like to speak, please let us know. You can raise your virtual hand. Do we have any comments, written, virtual?
We do not have any in-person or virtual comment.
Thank you. So I do need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Can I have a first?
First from Vi Ibarra.
Thank you.
Second, Sanderson.
Thank you. We have a first by Vi Ibarra, a second by Sanderson. And when you're ready, Deanna, if you can do a roll call.
Member Birdwell? Member Cooney? Member Dowjelly? Member Green Roselle? Member Ibarra?
Yes.
Member Nestor Brush? Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Sanderson?
Yes.
Member Sanders? Member Thompson?
Yes.
Member Toth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith and Chair Clark?
Yes.
Okay, we have a... Motion passes unanimously with members Cooney, Dowjelly, Green Roselle, Nestor Brush, and Vice Chair Smith absent.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to our regular agenda items. The first item is an action item to be presented by Danielle Elkins to review the final draft bylaws of the Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to read their revised bylaws and feels that everything that we spoke through on the last meeting have been incorporated and then hopefully accurately represented. I did not receive feedback or comments from anybody, but I'm happy to feel any questions on it.
Do we have any comments, questions from committee? Sanderson?
Yeah, I do, actually. I think we made a lot of progress, but frankly, I feel like there still are some things that I would like to see changed. I can go through those in depth at some point, but... Sorry, is that better?
Way better.
Okay, so I think we've made a lot of progress and we're almost there, but I do still think some changes are needed. In particular, I think there are a few sections in the definitions that I think ought to reference specific code sections of the law. For example, the ADA is codified at 42 USC 2101, or, excuse me, 12101. And ADA paratransit is provided very explicitly in pursuit of compliance with 49 CFR Part 37. So I just think if we're defining those things, we may as well point to the code sections that define them. And then the other thing we talked about a lot at the last meeting, and it is better than it was. But why does the county representative and the authority board representative, why can they not be on a transit agency board? That just seems like an excessive restriction.
My understanding was that was a direct request?
Yes.
From all of the members, so... Where?
Member Toth?
Yeah, so the idea, what we were trying to create in this structure was equal voices from all the spaces. And if you have, I'll just give an example. John Smith is on the Triple CTA Board and John Smith is on the CCTA Board. Then John Smith brings two levels of county connection voice to the room. We were trying to make it so that each person had one area of knowledge, expertise, or representation. So as not to have... To have more representation, more broad representation from as many places with as few people as we could so that we're small enough to be functional, but we don't have duplication of representation. That was what we discussed.
And I'd like to ask a question because you had said that it seems limiting. Is part of the concern that we wouldn't just be able to fill it? Like, we're putting it out there and there's just not enough people out there that would be able to fill that?
No. It's... Out of the members of the Authority Board and the Board of Directors, or the Board of Supervisors, my apologies. Once you exclude all of the Transit Agency Board members, that leaves a pretty small pool left. So that is one issue. The other issue is it doesn't have to be a conflict. I mean, it could be a conflict. I acknowledge that. But I think we don't necessarily eliminate all conflict by doing it this way because this, I think, would give particularly to CTA sort of a second bite at the apple. So if we're not going to change eliminating the Transit Agency Board membership, I would also say, let's have the County Board of Supervisors representative also not be on the Authority Board. That'd be a compromise suggestion.
My understanding was that we're aiming to not have an Authority Board member. So if we need to clarify that, that's fine, I think.
Isn't that...
Because they are already selecting a representative.
They're selecting one staff representative and one optional additional representative.
Ex officio, so they're not voting. They don't vote.
The county, yeah, but the CCTA Board is different. There's only one.
So then it only really applies to the county.
If I may make a suggestion, would it be possible to add in, so I'm just looking at page five, I'm guessing where it says Contra Costa County Representative on the bylaws? If you print them out, is that the section? Okay, could we say unless an exception is made by the AAC, then that way, if it's absolutely impossible to find somebody and Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors puts someone up and they are on more than one of those, we can say is an AAC, that's fine. We don't believe that that is a severe conflict of interest and that we can somehow bypass that. I mean, it's just a suggestion of, because like you said, it can be very limiting, so it makes it hard to find somebody. So if they were to put somebody up by a majority vote of the AAC, an exception can be made to that if nothing, no one is found?
I think that gets us some of the way there. I still think if you end up with, you've got their ex officio, they can't vote. Sure, okay, but you've got an Authority Board representative, right? And then you also have a staff representative from the county, okay? And then you also have a county representative, presumably a Board of Supervisors member. If that member is also a member of this CTA Board, then effectively CTA, maybe they don't have two votes, but they have two voices in the room. And they staff the committee and they prepare all the agendas. So our concern would be that that... You get the same challenge we were working on with the transit operator representatives just going another direction.
If we add the language at the end of, to the Contra Costa County Representative, the last sentence be the representative cannot represent a transit agency or serve on a transit agency board or the CTA, be serving on the CTA Board, would that cover it?
That would work for me.
How does everybody feel about that?
Do we have any comments about that? Yes.
So on page five, Contra Costa County Representative, where it's one member or one optional additional ex officio member, the one staff representative from Contra Costa County and one optional additional Board of Supervisor representative at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, but the representative cannot represent a transit agency or serve on a transit agency board or be serving on the CTA Board. It's just adding that, or be serving on the CTA Board.
Yes.
With my mouth full? Thank you. Do we have such a board member on the Board of Supervisors? Like, I want to kind of walk through if that exists. Because I'm just trying to think, so... Federal clever?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if there is one right now.
Ken Martin?
John Joya doesn't serve on...
So John Joya is not on the West... Okay, and...
He appoints someone to our board.
Pardon?
He appoints someone to our board, but he's not on our board.
Okay, great, and Chanel is on Tri Delta, right? I'm just trying to walk...
She's not anymore, I don't believe.
She's not, so there may be two possible... I'm just walking through, so we do have such a human. I just wanted to make sure that such a unicorn exists.
So our current Board of Supervisors, we have Diane Burgess and Ken Martin. Ken Martin.
Ken Carlson?
Carlson, yes.
Yes.
Hello?
We hear you.
You hear you. Hi, this is Teriann. I think the... I think you were asking who the Board of Supervisors are that sit on the CTA Board?
It was on the CTA Board and/or sit on a transit board, correct?
Yeah, so currently...
We're trying to find an animal that doesn't do any of those things that's on the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so currently, all of the Board of Supervisors do have some kind of capacity on the board. We have, as Danielle mentioned, we have Ken Carlson and Diane Burgess that sit as primary members. And then we have the other three Board of Supervisors all sit as alternates, which is Anderson, Joya, and Scales Preston. We do have Anderson that also sits as a non-voting ex officio representative, but she's also an alternate. So all five of the Board of Supervisors do sit in a capacity on our CTA Board.
So then that makes that not possible. Like, if we were to add that in there, the optional additional Contra Costa County Board of Supervisor Representative, we don't have such a person if we were to add in that they also could not serve on the CTA Board. It would basically eliminate...
At least an alternate, yeah.
It would eliminate the optional additional Board of Supervisors representative, which again, is an optional ex officio member. So would there ever be a case where there would be a CTA? I mean, that there would be a Board of Supervisors representative that wasn't on the CTA Board?
If we're including alternates?
Yeah, only if appointed as an alternate.
So if we were going in that direction, what it sounds like is that we're asking not to include an optional additional ex officio member from the Board of Supervisors? Sanderson?
That, I think that would be one way to do it. The other way to do it would be for the optional Board of Supervisors ex officio to drop the requirement about not serving on a transit agency board. That would then put the transit agencies and two CTA on the same level.
Because I would like to throw out there, when the executive director was here, he was saying this is a great thing. It's a great thing to have the County Board of Supervisors even interested in what we're doing. And I know that we kind of all supported that in that sense, that it would be great to have somebody here and have them interested in what we're doing it and hearing it and not having to hear it from a second, third, fourth party as it gets watered down. So the new suggestion from, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the representative cannot... So they can serve on the CTA Board, but get rid of the cannot represent a transit agency? So just get rid of that last sentence? The representative cannot represent a transit agency or serve on a transit agency board? Get rid of that sentence to make it a wider field?
But that negates all the work we agreed to before. I don't want to do that. I'm not... No. So I think maybe, let me ask this, because I think that that goes against all the work that we did around creating the structure that we created. So my question would be, do, and I guess, Teriann, I'm asking you, do the alternate Board of Supervisors regularly attend the CTA meetings? Do all three of them attend the meetings regularly that are alternates?
The two that are just alternates, Joya and Scales Preston, no. Joya has not attended a meeting, I believe, since I've been with CTA in nine years. Scales Preston is new. She would attend on behalf of... Let me think.
Diane Burgess?
I'd have to... Is she Burgess? I think she's Burgess. Let me look it up. Just confirm. But no, they, yeah, they do not regularly attend. It would only be on the behalf of, you know, a primary member if they were not available to attend. I know, and I believe Anderson is the first alternate for Burgess. So I think Scales Preston may be alternate to Carlson.
She's second alternate and John Joya is third alternate to Diane and first alternate to Ken Carlson.
So there would be options?
Joya, yeah. Joya or Scales Preston would probably be the best option. They do not serve that often on the board.
So we could say it is not serving on the board, but could be an alternate.
What about the representative cannot represent a transit agency? I'm sorry. Member Thompson?
Well, I think I'd be okay if it was what you just stated there, not serve directly on the Authority Board. I'll be honest, I don't have an opinion on the transit authority. I sort of agree with Debbie that we did do a lot of work around that. As much as I don't particularly like it, I did buy into it, so... Honestly.
Yeah, I think an alternate would probably be okay.
So we're changing it to say the representative can be an alternate on a transit agency board?
They cannot be a representative on the transit agency or the transit agency board or on the CTA Board, but they could be an alternate to a CTA Board member?
Right. So adding on, but they could be an alternate.
Do you have a term for that? Can't be a primary board member? Like, what do you call that human that's not an alternate?
That's what I was thinking, is cannot be a primary board member.
Primary, yeah.
Is that what you call it? Okay.
Yeah.
We'll add it to the definitions. Danielle, do you want to read that back out? I could make an attempt, but I might get corrected, which is totally fine, but...
The representative cannot represent a transit agency or serve on a transit agency board or be serving as a primary CTA Board member.
Comments? I think we may have found it.
Take the win.
I think we may have found it, thank you. And thank you for indulging in this. I know that we had a time to put comments together to you, but I also feel like even if that had been done then, we still would have had to have this conversation. So thank you. And we have one more. Member Sanderson?
Okay, the last one has to do with the Claims Review Subcommittee of the AAC. And my suggestion there is that we drop the Measure J specificity from that Claims Review Subcommittee, or...
I did not print that.
On seven, on subcommittees?
Is it seven?
Oh, I didn't print it.
It might be seven. Thanks. Okay.
Section 3.6 on page seven, Subcommittee.
Right, right, okay. There will be three standing AAC subcommittees, Nominating Recruitment, Measure J Claims, and ATSP Work Plan. My suggestion would be that we take that Measure J Claims Review Subcommittee and we just turn it into the generic Claims Review Subcommittee, or that we say the Measure J/Measure X Claims Review Subcommittee.
And then there's also the, well, I guess it's Program B is also Measure J, but...
Yes, Program B is Measure J also. I think 5310 is maybe already in there? I want to say? Anybody else remember?
So making it generic, a Claims Review Subcommittee, which means anybody making a claim to receive money,
Right.
that's what that means.
Can we be identified or be specified in such a way? I think it's great because what if you add one or what if you subtract one?
Right.
You know, it makes it more flexible. Does it pass muster?
I'm trying to think of a scenario where it would create any problems for us. I can't think of any right now. There are other, like, calls for projects that may be done in a separate review process that wouldn't necessarily fall under this, but I don't think so.
But if the point of the AAC is to give the umbrella community that we're all members of a bigger voice in county transportation planning decisions, maybe those other call for products should come through.
Most of them are not under the Accessible Transportation arm, so I'm trying to think of which other ones might fall under this.
Could it be and other ad hoc committees or projects as they come before the committee? I mean, we want it to be flexible. I agree with the sentiment behind that. So how would that look?
Measure J and additional tax?
Is there a reason it has to say Measure J, Measure X?
If we just say Claims Review Subcommittee?
Claims Review Subcommittee? Or Accessible Claims, but that should be implied by the rest of it.
I think Claims Review. It's the cleanest option.
So I want to make sure that everybody has a voice on that. What's being suggested is to just delete Measure J and leave it as a Claims Review Subcommittee? Do we have, yes, Measure Sanders?
It seems to me that the real question is whether you want to give any one committee that kind of power and a continuing power. That's the real issue, not whether or not it's just Measure J or Measure X. And as the new guy on the block, I really don't feel that I have sufficient experience with this organization to comment on that at this point.
Okay, thank you. Member Thompson?
Isn't it just given it the option? This Claims Review Committee has the, will be given the purview by the Authority Board to review the claims, you know? We're not, we're just talking about the name of it and not limiting it, not actually taking over every single claim.
You have to do that.
Yeah, I think that's it to be, you know, if a claim comes in and is reviewed to the AAC, it would go through this committee.
So Section 4.5, I think, actually answers our question on this.
Oh.
It's, so 4.5 is Claim Review, and it says, "Review annual claims for Measure J, 5310, and any other applicable funds or make recommendations to the board regarding these claims and applications appropriate." So I think we already have it defined.
So take out Measure J from Section 3.6 because it's defined...
It's already defined in 4.5.
In Section 4.5.
We could add Measure X to 4.5. It'd be fun. Just saying.
And/or other applicable funds?
Yeah, I withdraw my snarky comment.
Measure X is out. Of being added specifically into the bylaws, is that... Okay. Okay? So again, we're taking Measure J out of Section 3.6 because it is defined in Section 4.5 under Claim Review. And do we have comments on that? Want to make, again, make sure everybody's heard. Okay, thank you. Oh, that's me.
Maybe to report, just to repeat what we've now agreed to, updating the definitions to always include the codified section of law that they are referencing for consistency. Under the Contra Costa County Board Representative, including the language we agreed on of, or as cannot be serving as a primary CTA Board member, and then removing Measure J from Section 3.6. Those are our three changes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other additional comments from the committee before we move on to public comments about this? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Please raise your virtual hand or submit a public speaker card. Do we have any public speaker cards or anyone virtually asking to speak?
We do not have any in-person or virtual public comments.
Great. Do we have any written public comments on this?
We do not have any written public comments either.
Did you just say that and I didn't hear it?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the floor is approval of the final draft bylaws of the Accessibility Advisory Committee along with the changes that were just stated by staff member Danielle Elkins. I need a first or I need a motion and a second? I need a first or I need a motion and a second. I move, Debbie. Board member Toth moves.
Sanderson second.
And Sanderson seconds. Thank you very much. Yeah, let's do that. This is huge. Well, they're important. Deanna, would you please conduct a roll call?
Absolutely. Member Birdwell?
Yes.
Member Cooney? Member Daljelli? Member Green Roselle? Member Ibarra?
Yes.
Member Nestor Brush? Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Sanderson?
Yes.
Member Sanders? Member Toth?
Yes.
Member Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith and Chair Clark?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously with members Daljelli, Cooney, Green Roselle, Nestor Brush, and Vice Chair Smith absent.
I'd take a cleansing breath. And I know that I was supposed to make this comment earlier, but I'll just make it now. Thank you, the CCTA staff, that went back and went back and went back and went back and went back. So appreciate it, appreciate your patience, and also all your diligent work on it. Thank you very much. All right. That item's done. You're going to now move on to the next item. We all had our time. Okay, the next item is an action item to be introduced by Danielle Elkins for the Paratransit Coordinating Council Subcommittee to review the fiscal year 24, excuse me, fiscal year 2526, Measure J Program 15 Claim Forms from claimants.
So all claimants submitted claims this year. And starting the week of, I think we said, May 19th, the interviews were conducted, started to be conducted up until just last week. So thank you so much to our Subcommittee members who reviewed all of the claims and conducted all of the interviews. One of the requests that we had this year was for the Subcommittee to also come back with recommendations on how to improve the process, since a lot of us were new to this process, including staff. So I wanted to allow the Subcommittee to share their recommendations as well as recommendations for how we improve the process going forward.
Great, thank you. At this point, we will take comments from the committee. I can roll chambo, draw straws. Okay, I see some glasses going on, so I'm going to recognize Member Sanders.
Thank you. I'm happy to speak, at least as to all but one. I think it's accurate to say that the committee chose to approve or would recommend approving the claims. As to the one which is the City of El Cerrito, we would like some more time to work with the city to improve or work on its claim and to do some other things that we have in mind. And that, I think, fairly summarizes where we're at, or I hope it fairly summarizes where we're at. Each of us, I, each of the three members of the committee, I know, has some other thoughts, some stronger, some less, some not quite as strong, but I don't think that's really necessary at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sanderson?
Yeah, I think that sums it up reasonably well. I, we were not, we are not totally unanimous in our view. We weren't given a mandate of strict unanimity. So, you know, we kind of were winging it. I do think City of El Cerrito, I know their program has been valuable in the past, and I think they mean well. But there were some pretty clear challenges with their program itself and also with some of the detail on the application. I would say overall, the, there was a lot of inconsistency on the applications. And I think, and I have expressed this to Danielle, and I think she's supportive, that there ought to be sort of a CCTA helpline for applicants who are filling out those applications to just make sure they're understanding all the questions correctly and, you know, can help out with, what did we say last year, I'm new here, whatever. Those kinds of things. And then also, I think, we do have a wealth of not just public transit, but accessible transportation knowledge in this room. So let's leverage that by working to promulgate a set of sort of universal benchmarks or standards that can be used so that we're comparing apples to apples on future claims. And as to the process, I would suggest that we, rather than just sort of brainstorming right here and now and then calling it a day, let's be a little more deliberate about it and come back to this, spend some time on it in the coming year, and then have a really strong process next year.
Member Sanders?
Given the bylaws that were just accepted and the changes to the bylaws, I suggest that we establish a standing committee, and it could be the Claims Committee itself, to create those standards. That is, what information do we need to do the job to adequately satisfy the needs of the underlying law that we're dealing with and the claims? No one wants to do anything other than to deliver services to those who are intended to have, to be the recipients of those services. And the question is how to do that most efficiently. And we need a set of rules. And it seems to me the set of rules needs to come from this group.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the actual Subcommittee? Member Birdwell?
Yeah. I really, the only thing I said was that I just didn't know what the heck I was doing and that we were just kind of thrown into the Subcommittee. No direction, not what to do, say. It's all very late. I know we had some scheduling stuff, but I think we need to prepare better and help the committee when I don't know what I'm doing. You know, so it'd be nice to know that. Thank you.
If I may, in that connection, one of the things that I learned on this round was that if you're going to do a serious job, there's serious reading, and that is a serious time commitment. And I think that needs to be emphasized to this entire group. I know that I put in at least 30 hours of reading and trying to synthesize and then trying to interpret the materials that I saw. And I have, we have made some recommendations to Danielle in our earlier meeting. I don't think Danielle needs them to be repeated. I saw you were taking notes. But I think that those recommendations need to be taken very seriously, or else we're going to be back in the same can of worms that we found ourselves in on this occasion.
Member Toth?
I will say, first of all, thank you. Thank you to those who volunteered their time not knowing what it entailed. What you brought up was a reason that I can't volunteer for that committee anymore because I just don't have the time or the bandwidth to do it. I'm already working 60 and 70 hours a week, and that's a reduction since my medical, so... But I did want to say, in the past, we had Peter Engel. So we had a staff person at the committee who walked us through, who talked us through. We convened inhuman. We actually went through things together. So we did homework on our own, and then we came together as a group, and then we walked through each of the questions, and if, you know, so we had a tour guide, so to speak, right? Where we don't, we're in between staff people, and you're thrown in, and you're new, and what, you know, like... So this is kind of an anomaly year, I'm thinking. But in a regular functioning world where people are fully staffed, there's a staff person to this committee that actually shepherds the process through. So I think, I appreciate that you all did that in the blind, and I was just sitting here thinking, oh, my God, the next generation of Measure J claims people have risen. I'm so happy. But, yeah, it's not easy. I mean, we spent, we spent a lot of years and time in blah, 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 blah. So I think to say, I don't want you to be turned off and think that this is how it's always been. It hasn't been that way. When we're fully staffed and functioning, there's somebody who makes that process a lot easier. So stick around, do it again next year. You'll see how much better it is. You'll be a leader next year and not a unknown. Anyway, thank you, guys, all, and thank you, I want to, I want to thank CCTA staff too, as the chair did. The amount of cat herding that you guys have to do to set up meetings is pretty intense, and I just appreciate it.
We need to find a better way, a better way to cut down on the administrative work to bring the cats together.
Thank you, Member Sanders. Yes, we've talked a little bit about that, and I, Danielle can speak to it more truly, but maybe even adding in two more Subcommittee members just to make sure that we can have a quorum for those Subcommittee meetings. I think would help instead of just having three. We can't have six because it would be too many, and it would be split a vote of three and three. So the most we could have would be five, so four or five might help next year.
Member Sanderson?
Yeah, I think a bigger Subcommittee is a really interesting idea, deserves exploration. Also, when we were talking across the hall before this meeting, we did acknowledge that this has been an exceptional year. And I think going forward, I think we will be very well-served by having a staff member who has at least some knowledge and the bandwidth to take on that role of actually staffing the Subcommittee. Also, I think the timeline this year, because of all the chaos, got very compressed. And I think if we start significantly earlier in the year, that'll give us a lot more time to make everything just much more comfortable pace-wise.
Member Toth?
Yeah, so the position that CCTA will fill, that is the
Program Manager?
Accessibility and whatever, oh, okay, the Program Manager. They are going to be staffed to the PCC and the subcommittees, that's correct? So there will be, once you hire a human, somebody who's dedicated to that work. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I just have a quick, oh, please, Member Sanders.
Do not forget that we still have the outstanding question of what we're going to do about the one program that we are not recommending to approve at this point.
I did just want to say specifically, thank you to the committee members. Even with staff direction, you know, it is a lot of work. I know, as both having been a committee member and a claimant, it's, I'm extremely appreciative of it. I did want to say also that we talked about, which I think, a couple of things. One, we talked about putting the whole calendar of the claim form together along with our meetings so that everybody who's a claimant knows the second week, this is what is happening, that we say this is when the interviews will be conducted, it will be one hour. Please make sure that you're available for it so that we're doing that way ahead of time, so that the agencies themselves aren't scrambling, and then the people on the committee know. So we worked through some details with that, but that was definitely something that I know had hung that up. And I also want, just ask for an agenda item for claim form changes so that we put that on maybe another meeting where we're reviewing for it, because I think it's also important for the claimants and everything to hear. And thank you very much, Member Sanders, of suggesting, and I just wanted to agree with that, that part of what we're doing on this board is, what is the information that we want? Right? So if that's the information this board decides that they want, then that's great. And we're doing it enough time that gives the claimants a chance to collect that information, even if it's only for three months or four months. But the claimants have enough chance, you know, to make those changes as well. So I'd love to see that on future agenda items, not just as an announcement that it's coming, but having the board have a chance to look at that and add or subtract as a unit, as what we feel.
Just one additional thought that we hadn't earlier discussed, and that's this. I think that there's, we have some great resources out there. When you've interviewed these people, there are some real professionals who really know what they're doing. It's one of the things that I found out as part of the claims process. And for goodness sake, we're not using them to the best of our ability. We could and should be asking some of the better-practiced jurisdictions to assist the smaller ones. I don't think that's too much in the context of the amounts of money that are being thrown around here. And I think that we should be, I think that we should be getting some volunteerism from the big guys to help the little guys. And I think that if we send someone important like Danielle out to ask for that help, that we might actually get it.
Yeah, it's you, too.
So is John a big guy in that scenario?
And Member Thompson? And Member Perry?
To piggyback on that, I think, yeah, the transit providers do have something sort of distinct, I'll say, to offer. But, you know, the social service providers have a lot going on too that I think, let's leverage each other, you know? Like, we all know things that nobody else knows, and we all have need of knowledge that somebody else in the room has, so let's try to make that happen.
Danielle, I'm going to ask, because we kind of did a very, very quick wrap-up on that meeting, and you had some suggestions possibly of how we could approve the claim forms and move forward with the, with the comments that were made from the Subcommittee.
Yeah, I think the way we summarized it was that we want to come up with a list of conditions that hopefully that they can, clear recommendations to them if they can comply with it in a certain amount of time, that then they can be conditionally approved.
City of El Cerrito?
Yes.
We have a list prepared by someone on the Subcommittee, and we just need the other yogis on the committee to respond to that list.
So my suggestion would be for the Subcommittee to do that and give that to CCTA staff. And then that can be delivered to the agency itself. But what I'm hearing is that the Subcommittee is willing to recommend all agencies with the contingency that the City of El Cerrito provides some additional information and meet certain expectations. What I don't hear kind of is a timeline?
What I would, the way I would prefer at this point to do it is, rather than approve that one claim, I'd rather set a statement that we would conditionally approve if the following conditions are met. And then we can and should be setting down those conditions and our expectations as to how they should be fulfilled. And I don't think that's too difficult from our point of view. I don't think that takes a long time from our point of view, given the work that we've already put in. I think the real question is how long it's going to take the El Cerrito jurisdiction to get its act together to accomplish what we want them to do.
Member Sanderson?
So I agree with what Member Sanders is saying in spirit. But I also think, given where we are right now today and the timeline that we're trying to meet in terms of, I think it's presenting the whole package to the authority board, is that... think it's presenting the whole package to the authority board, is that. So my concern is that if we withhold our endorsement of one of the claims even temporarily, that that will be very, very disruptive. So my suggestion would be that we approve all claims with the understanding that we're expecting the city of El Cerrito to engage with a process TBD for answering some additional questions and, and possibly making some changes to their program.
My question too was, do we do, are, are there two releases of funds throughout the year, is it only one? Oh, it used to be two. Okay, because we, okay. Because that was kind of my question. It's like, if it's one authorization, but there's one payment and then another payment, that between that first payment and that second payment, that we set some structure to see if they can meet that. I will make the comment too, that if we withhold funding, but then expect them to do something, how can they continue to do that? Like, if we don't give them funding, but we're expecting them to pick up the program and, and do things with it if they have absolutely no funding, then how do we do that? Which is a, you know, argument that we made with another agency. And we decided to, right? So I, I want to make sure that we're being consistent and fair across the board with how we do that, which is, okay, we'll fund and we'll ask you to meet this. If you don't meet this, then there will be another one. And then at some point to come back and say, okay, we've met three times on this, three times, these haven't been met now, right? I know that's kind of vague, random, but like I said, I want to make sure. I don't know if not funding someone and then asking them to, to meet service and continue service is, is, is fair. I do think setting some type of limit on it though, to say, hey, by this time though, we will review and we need to see some improvements, I, I, I do think. But the detail of that is where. Member Sanders?
So my view is that by approving with a caveat or a recommendation or a comment or however you want to put it, we kind of are doing that. And what we're saying is, okay, this year, all right, there are some expectations that must happen before the claims next year. I mean, I think the, the timeline of a year is kind of baked in to the, the idea. Maybe a year is not the right answer. Maybe it should be a shorter amount of time. Maybe we have interim goals. Maybe we set it up sort of quarterly, you're going to do this or something. But I think the, it's clear, I mean, it would be clear to me if I were the recipient, that the understanding is, next year, we're not going to be conditionally approved, we're going to be not approved.
And we will work with you from here to that year to be specific about what, what that means.
Precisely.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Rob, it's really directed to you. I was very impressed by the presentation of your people. How close are you geographically, how close are you geographically to the El Cerrito jurisdiction?
There's the big guy who's going fishing for.
We're probably seven, eight miles away. We're close.
Do you have any, do you have drivers that you can loan?
So we, we can't, no, we've actually had the conversation with San Pablo. We have contracted servers, so we just, we couldn't do that.
Do you have any ability to help them to, to acquire the drivers that they, they're missing?
I, I'd actually like to steer this just a little bit to say that that might be a discussion down the road, but I think right now.
I didn't mean?
No, 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 I just, I think that that can go a whole bunch of different ways and I think it's a great idea and I think it's absolutely worth exploring. But I think that that is not a decision that can be made here, that then will contribute to the decision, which is, are we approving El Cerrito claim form or not? So I, I want to be clear, all claim forms that have been submitted, except for the city of El Cerrito, are being approved. City of El Cerrito were saying, we are approving it, but there will be conditions put on it for review and that if things have not approved and they haven't met those conditions, that they will not be approved for funding, that, that will, but, they will risk not being approved for funding the next year, because we can't say that for sure. That's what I would like to put out there for now on that. And what I'm hearing from the committee, I'm hearing two from the committee, yes, one from the committee, not so sure about that, which is, which is fine. I just want to make sure that we've got all that voice out there.
And I don't even mind being in a minority. My problem is, and has been, that there's literally no service at all being given to the citizens of that particular jurisdiction at this time. And my problem is that if we're going to release the funds that are requested by this jurisdiction, that it should at least be released for the purpose of driving and not necessarily to be used on either acquiring new vehicles, which were proposed, or paying for more administration of no drivers. That's why I'm, I was hoping that either Westcat or AC Transit or, or one of the other big guys, County Connection, could, might be able to help out, even on a loan or two of some people to carry, to carry that jurisdiction. What we, when I specifically inquired as to, how are you doing on the hiring process? The answer was very negative. And that's what causes me to be very reluctant to give, to advance the funds without a clawback right and without, without any immediate condition. That's where my problem is. So you, i- i- if my colleagues say that they both recommend, I respect their positions, but I have difficulty with that particular one.
Do you have difficulty with it, that the conditions are not defined yet? Or would you be willing to say yes with conditions to be defined later?
I, I have a two-page list of conditions that have already been circulated to my committee members. And I think, as I understand it, you all agreed that those conditions seem to be appropriate. But, but whether or not you want to refine them, what I don't want to do is I don't want to go back and reinvent the wheel.
Member Sanders?
Totally agree about reinventing the wheel. We don't want to do that. I think the list of conditions that you put together is a, a perfect place to start. But I, I do think there may need to be some refinement, just because I honestly, I did not have time to go through each one in the kind of level of detail that I would sort of need if the condition were being placed on an operation I was responsible for. So I think we need to be very, very careful about going through that list and making sure that everything is sort of translated into transportation speak in, in a way that will have the intended effect and some other things. I, I think the, the fact is that there is a national and even global shortage of commercial drivers. It's a problem everywhere. That said, I think it's a, a fair point, that if your program isn't able to attract any drivers and you have no wheels turning on the road, at some point, we need to look at that pretty hard. But I don't think it would serve anyone's interest to, as Jean said, to hold up the city of El Cerrito's claim such that they don't get the money to do the improvements that we want to see done. I think we need to, I, I don't think we're there yet. I think things have been just going along smooth sailing up until right now. And one, one cycle feels like a very abrupt change to that. So.
Are you saying, just from your review too, that this has been an agency that performed in the past?
My understanding is that they have.
When I, yeah, when I reviewed the claim forms last year and it being a neighboring city, they have, they have performed in the past. I just kind of wanted to make that clear. As you had said, it's not something that's been happening, it's something that has been very recent.
Right. And, and I also want to be really clear that ADA paratransit service is provided throughout the city of El Cerrito by East Bay Paratransit. What is not happening in a concrete tangible way, except I think maybe on a, sort of a drop in the bucket kind of basis, is the non-ADA El Cerrito Parks and Rec Department program that serves something like 120 people or 150 people, something like that. So yes, there is that missing service component that's really not, not out there on the roads as we'd like it to be. But we're not totally abandoning the citizens of El Cerrito with no accessible options.
Member Toth?
I want to thank you for bringing up that they have historically have performed, because I think that that differentiates it a little bit from the other situation that we dealt with. I'm wondering if a condition could be that they contract with an external provider until they can hire on their own. I don't know what the amount of funding is, having not reviewed the claims, but I'm very concerned if there's zero service happening and taxpayer dollars are going to fund services that aren't happening, what's happening with that money in the absence of providing the services? So I do know that there are, I mean, Silver Ride, there's Easy Ride, there's, there are a number of TNC-type services that are trained, their drivers go through the drug and alcohol testing. We piloted with Silver Ride, we're program status now, we're no longer pilots, we're programs. So there's that. There are wheelchair accessible vehicle, like B811 that provides that. Like, there are opportunities perhaps to be providing services while also looking for a driver so that we know that that money that is coming from taxpayer dollars is going to provide service in the absence of it being provided. And again, I don't know all those numbers, but if we're talking about giving conditional approval to something, to me, a condition that people are being served, if they're receiving the full pot of money, would make some sense.
Others have used Uber and Lyft, they reported using Uber and Lyft. And we didn't see that sort of offering from this particular jurisdiction. And that went into the trouble that I'm having with coming, I'm, I'm not, coming to, to the conclusion that we recommend at least a tentative approval. I sympathize. I don't want to shut down anyone's program, but if I'm paying administration with no one to administer, something's bothering me in the back of my head about that.
So I would, I know we have a board member that actually has to leave. What I would like, okay, okay. What I'd like to do is propose again that the claims be approved, including the city of El Cerrito, with the caveat that there are conditions that need to be met. Those conditions are not going to be defined here today.
Right.
So I think that might be the vote, is that are you okay with yes or no approving the claim forms? Or could we divide it between the remaining claim forms and then do a separate vote for El Cerrito, whether people support that? I don't know.
I, can I, can I just comment on that? Because I think that, given that it's a brand-new issue with them, when you carve them out and make them a separate point, it makes them look negative in a very public setting and I wouldn't want to do that. I think, given this is new, given this is, what I'm hearing from you, I'm reading a little bit between the lines because I don't have the full picture, but something new emerged and they're not providing service. This is not a history of non-compliance, which is what we saw historically. So we don't want to call them out and make them look bad. They're having a rough moment. We want to make it so that they can pick back up where they left off, but not filling their bank account with money that isn't being delivered to people. I mean, I'm just speaking in plain language, right? And so, so I would not suggest that we pull them out and make them a, that's just me. You guys are welcome to disagree, but I think that it, it, it can have a negative impact on the city of El Cerrito where if it's just a hiccup in a moment in time as opposed to a pattern in practice of not providing services and receiving money, those are two different things. And I think, I like the idea of having a big brother come in and, and, and help or see, you know, how can we bring community together? What we don't want to do at this point is vilify them, but we also don't want services not being provided while they're receiving money. So, but without making them a bad guy, because they're not a bad guy. This is a new momentary hiccup. So what, what is the best way to move that forward and still have people who are concerned about how tax dollars are spent feel like we're pacified in the process, right?
We, we could approve upon condition that they provide, that they have drivers.
I would.
And if the, the drivers can be hired, they can be independently contracted for.
Unfortunately, those kinds of things have to be decided by a city council as well. Things like Uber and Lyft is a massive contract that also has to go through city council, be approved. So unfortunately, a lot of those things with the city not only take time, but may not be approved by their governing body. And as we know, we don't have any authority over any other organization's governing body. So I think that that might need, again, to just, I, just for that to kind of put that in perspective. And again, I think what we're saying here is, we're saying it can be approved with conditions, but is this body okay with doing that without having those conditions identified today at this meeting? Is kind of what I'm hearing. And I haven't put that as a, but.
I don't know, so maybe changing it to say that creating a process to help them rectify this.
I like that. To be clear, just on a couple of points that came up, yes, I, I think the, my read on the situation is that the El Cerrito program has had a, a rough year and has encountered some real bumps in the road and currently is not in a great state. But the, we, I was on the committee last year and there was no issue. So, yeah, I, I do think that this is a recent development. I also want to just give a little bit of a shout-out to, I, I totally agree that programs need to actually deliver what it is they're there to do. But the simple reality is, you also need to do a certain amount of program building in order to get there. And I think El Cerrito is in a phase of rebuilding right now. They have lost some of the people that were driving for them. And I believe they also have had some staff turnover. And so, yeah.
A full-time staff turnover.
Right. So, you know, I think there, we need to allow them space to actually finish their transition. And I don't want to, I don't want to derail that because of where they happen to be in the moment that we do our snapshot. So yes, I, I think approve with a process for improvement to be specified later.
I, I think John's proposal is absolutely reasonable. I just want some sense of assurance that it's going to be adhered to. That's why I love the big brother idea to come in. That's why, I, when you actually sit and listen to the presentations of the claims from the various agencies, there is a real big difference between, you, you know immediately that you're listening to an agency that knows what in the world they're doing. And when you hear the world they're doing, and when you hear one that's not quite up to that snuff. And I just want some sense of reassurance that we're going to push them in the right direction. I'm not trying to shut off any services or any money from anywhere.
So one option we have from Teri Ann is we say, we we split these. We say, these ones are approved, this one is separate, but we can bring it back to the July PCC meeting for discussion, to see if they have rectified the issues that we outlined with them. And then it would go, that allocation itself would go potentially to the board, the CCTA board in September, instead of July with the rest of them.
Which means it delays their payments. So they're trying to build a program and they won't get money to do it. It'll delay their payments by about three or four months.
And I agree, that's not a good idea.
OK.
OK.
So I think it is to approve all claim forms with conditions to be given to the city of El Cerrito for improvement.
So.
That's the vote?
Well, that we're going to develop a process to help them get compliant within.
Yes, OK.
Yeah.
That we will approve the fiscal year 2526 Measure J Program 15 claims as recommended by the Paratransit Coordinating Council Claim Sub Review Subcommittee, and develop a process for the city of El Cerrito to meet standards. All right.
So moved.
Can't do it yet, I have to ask for public comment, I'm sorry. It's on, it's on the paper, it's on the paper, I'm sorry. I know. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand or submit a public speaker card.
We do not have any virtual or in-person public comment, thank you.
And do we have any written?
We do not have any written either.
So we don't have any written public comment now. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Sanderson?
I'll second.
Second by Birdwell. Deanna, may you please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. Member Birdwell?
Yes.
Member Cooney? Member Dowjelly? Member Green Roselle? Member Ibarra?
Yes.
Member Nestor Brush? Member Perry?
Yes.
Member all, uh, Sanderson?
Yes.
Member Sanders?
Yes.
Member Thompson? Oh, hey, something. Member Toth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith and Chair Clark.
Yes.
All right. The motion passes unanimously with members, we have absent, we have Cooney, Dowjelly, Green Roselle, Nestor Brush, and Vice Chair Smith absent.
And Thompson, no.
And Thompson absent as well, thank you.
OK. Thank you, everybody, and again, always thank you for the discussion, much appreciate it. So that concludes our regular agenda items. We have some reports, if people have to give. One is from the East Bay Paratransit Access Committee. Does anybody have a report on that?
Before we leave to that, a question. What do you want us on the Subcommittee, the Claim Subcommittee, to do further? Do you want us to get together further and take, work on those conditions?
We'll coordinate, getting the Subcommittee back together to work on what the process will be.
Thanks.
OK. Does anybody who attended a recent East Bay Paratransit Access Committee meeting have anything to say? I think the representatives that usually do that aren't here. The Senior Mobility Action Council, do we have anybody to give a report on that? Member Toth?
So I think Jim Donnelly, is he still on? Because.
Yes, he is.
I was only there for half of the meeting, he was there for the whole meeting, so his report will be more comprehensive than mine, so if it's OK.
Yes, recognize Jim Donnelly to speak.
Yeah, this is Jim Donnelly.
Hi, Jim.
All right. Yeah, we met, the Senior Mobility Action Council is, is working on trying to do three different workshops at different spots in the county on transportation, and looking to try to do, set up to do the first one in Lafayette. And they're really just at the beginning of the planning stages, more so than they realize. So that's kind of where they are right now.
Great. Thank you.
Debbie, would you like to add anything?
Wow, that was a perfect summary, thank you.
Just a question, when you say transportation workshops, is this information gathering, information giving?
Information giving.
Information giving. OK, thank you. We don't have any correspondence or communications. The next one, moving on to future agenda items, anybody have any topics that members would like to have agendized for future meetings, please? Member Toth?
Can I, and this may be out of the ballpark of what's possible, but could we get an update on where we are with getting a staff person to staff this committee and getting to the point of a CE and like, bring us back to where we are in the process and what our timeline is? Because our timeline is definitely different than what we had originally started with, and I'm not trying to call you to the carpet, I'm just trying to like, let's have a transparent process about it, too, so that hopefully, when folks volunteer for committees and things like that, we kind of have a sense of when we're going to get the kind of support that we need, and we want to move forward. I mean, I think we all want to move forward with doing better, and that means that we need to be able to implement a plan, which means we need staff. So I would just ask if we could get an update from you, or from Tim, or from, I don't care.
I was going to give my update with the full spiel.
Oh, look at that, future agenda item realized.
Great. Anyone else? Member Ibarra?
Regarding future meetings, I hope everyone in this room has summer vacation plans, and my summer vacation plans will preclude me from being at the July meeting. So I just wanted to put it out there that if there may be an issue with reaching a quorum for the July meeting, perhaps we should know that sooner instead of later, so that we could start the rescheduling game sooner instead of later.
Thank you, yes, especially with summer coming up, yes.
I would say, given the timing of everything, I want to tell you guys in a minute, that makes sense that we could re, like, it would be good to reconvene in the fall.
OK, great. Anything else? I, again, I'd just like to ask that we agendize at some point claim form changes, to talk about as a group, and then also that we get an update on the recommendation from the Subcommittee of the different conditions, so that that be on an agenda somewhere, as, once that gets fully realized, that we just get some information on that. Yes, member Toth?
Oh, one more, I don't know, forgive me, because it could be brain fog, but we had, at one point, started to dive into technology interface and scheduling, and we had talked about having presentations from the different providers about their technology ability for folks who may not be able to articulate, they could use a text app to schedule paratransit, like, we got into some, hearing some real lived stories of challenges with scheduling, and wanting to know more about what the technology aspects and availability was for scheduling. And I think we had a presentation, I think we had a lot of discussion, and then I think it disappeared, at least from my awareness. That doesn't mean that it disappeared in real life, so I just want to put that out there. But I'd like to not drop that, because that's important for some writers, thanks.
And that is basically options.
And that's in your report, too, as well, of course.
From service providers. And I do know we had a couple that that reported, and those agencies actually reached out specifically to those people that came to speak, to work out, you know, one-on-one that, but I, I assume you're talking about globally, right? Yeah, more than just one-on-one, OK. Any other future agenda items? Have you got it? You wanted to give an update? OK.
I feel like I can answer every question with my update, so I'm waiting to tell you guys. One thing I wanted to bring up was the Accessible Futures Conference that's happening next Monday, Tuesday, to see if, hopefully, everybody knows about it. We sent that out, didn't we?
We did not.
No. OK, we were going to, I'm sorry. You can forward that email. So the second big news is that we, as of today, have posted our Director of Programs and our Program Manager positions. So they are now officially up on our website, the Careers page, as well as the CCTA LinkedIn page, so please share them with folks that you think would be great to lead this work. We've updated the job descriptions a little bit, based on feedback from folks and how the program has evolved. With that assumption, we're giving a month for people to apply and then have to complete rounds of interviews, so the thinking is that hopefully we can have these people onboard by maybe mid-August at this point, depending on how the holidays impact response, July 4th. And then, once we have those folks onboard, what we would like to have as a potential option is to do a series of workshops in the fall, to get everybody back together, to talk about each of these main issues, to do technology updates, to talk about travel training, what are all of the things that have dropped off that we want to bring back? And maybe we do a breakout session on Claim 15 and how to improve that.
Great, thank you.
These workshops, listening or telling?
I feel like very much listening. I think more, more so listening than telling. We we need to understand what the issues are, and I want the practitioners to have the opportunity to talk to each other and share ideas and brainstorm and figure out what we want for this ATSP work plan, too.
Sounds good.
Any questions? OK. So we have the future agenda items also, because of that, is anyone from the public like to speak, either virtually or in person? Please let us know now.
We do not have any public or in-person comment.
OK, and have we received any written?
We have not received any written public comment.
OK. That means that we are adjourned officially at 3:27 PM.